I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I've asked Brent Speth if he would say an opening prayer unless there's someone in the audience that would like to do that.
Our dear heavenly father, it is with much gratitude that we bow our heads in this great country of America, have the opportunity to recognize from where our blessings come, and we're grateful unto thee. We're grateful for our community of Providence, that we have the freedoms to be able to choose and elect and work and serve our fellow man. We're grateful, father in heaven, for this wonderful community. And we pray humbly this evening, as we listen, plan, and discuss things, that thy spirit will be with us, that we might be able to work and serve the community the very best of our ability. Again, we're grateful unto thee, heavenly father, for thee and thy son, Jesus Christ, and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Well, unless you've been out of this country, you don't realize just really how wonderful it is to live in a country that has the freedoms that we have and the opportunities that we have. And I, for one, am very grateful to have the opportunity to be here. Let's do council reports. So Jeff, can we start with you?
Sure. I don't really have a lot. I had quite a few citizens email me and just questions, mostly in the area that I live about, streets and parking and roundabouts and irrigation conflicting and anyway, I've already talked to Ryan and he'll talk to me more about it, but just, I guess I'll have more questions about street stuff in the future and I'll meet with you next month on that. But I don't, I don't have much to report.
Okay. Thank you. Brent?
Well, it has been a busy month, but not all it's been involved with city stuff, but there has been some, have been discussion irrigation situations with some of the people who would like to have pressurized irrigation. Have also visited with others regarding land use and land development. Also had the opportunity to meet with Ryan, spend an hour and a half with him, especially getting a state of the things happening in the city and his take on things, and I really appreciate him, his wisdom, his worth as a city manager, because he sure does keep things in check and moving forward, and I just want to appreciate him. Also, I spent some time, several hours assisting a partially disabled veteran, rebuild a set of stairs for emergency exit from his second story bedroom, so that he and his loved companion would have a way out. They're both in their 80s and in the event there was an emergency and so I felt very happy about that. I enjoyed that. And so that's about what I've done.
Thank you.
Some of the things that I've been working on first, I want to say thank you for excusing me last month. I had a unexpected medical situation at my house, so I appreciate you excusing me last month. Also, I've had several meetings with the South Cash Community Psych care group. They're, I think, finally done with their like firming up of their organization and their bylaws, and so they're ready to kind of hit the ground running with some community programs and outreach. They're specifically targeting like high schools and doing vape intervention and education and prevention work. And the Legislative Policy Committee with the state legislature has resumed its meetings. They met on Monday, and I feel kind of encouraged by the legislature's new angle on the modern income housing, maybe 2.0 will be a little more cooperative and measurable, hopefully. That they're working on some drafts for that, so hopefully there's some improvements there. I do have some concerns about some of the things that are going on with the legislature. They've done some wildfire assessments, and I don't remember the bill numbers, but wildfire assessments, and I would say probably two-thirds of our city is looking for, looking at wildfire assessments from the state on our property taxes. And 48%? House Bill 48 is the, is the bill number. And, and also the division of drinking water. So the state, in both of those instances, is looking to apply fees to our property taxes, and they don't have to go through public hearings or truth in taxation the same way that we do. And it seems unprecedented and a little bit out of, out of character, especially for strong GOP positioning as far as what they are positioning on taxes and the way they profess to approach the taxes. I hope that we can learn more, like from Representative Snyder and Senator Wilson, to understand what they're doing and, and maybe what, if they are realizing the precedence and the unintended consequences of the things that they're doing and the fees that they're applying, that we don't really have any control over as they come, you know, onto our bills, so. And then I've also synced up with Ryan and just a comment on the city celebration, since I wasn't here last month to comment on that. I had so many citizens that attended the celebration who told me that it just, they felt so proud to come to that celebration. It made them feel like this was their hometown, and, and I felt like that was super rewarding. I feel like that's what we are working towards. We try to build a safe, vibrant community, but ultimately we want people to say, this is home. This feels like home, and I belong here, and I'm proud to be from here. So I thought that was awesome and says a lot about our Sauerkraut Committee and just our city as a whole, so I just wanted to share that.
So I just came from the Ridgeline Homecoming Parade with the youth council, and they are adorable and as great as always. We've, they've been busy volunteering and, and they are just looking for opportunities and, and they, not me, are reaching out to like the Cash Humane Society, and I mean the Cash Humanitarian Center, like looking at different projects that we can do, and it's so fun to, to have these youth that are so exceptional in our community and get to work with them. I'm glad that Janelle talked about the state and concerns with that. I actually put some posts out on social media, and I was happily surprised that they were getting shared and reshared. And I have a lot of concerns too. I'm looking forward to meeting with Casey, and I've been trying to make an appointment with Chris, and it's interesting when I ask him for a date, he gives me a thumbs up. So I'm not sure he wants to hear what, what his constituents have to say, and that's upsetting. And that's enough for me.
Okay. David?
Yeah, like Brent, I met with Ryan for an hour, hour and a half. We talked about the, a little bit about the general plan and some of the stuff I think we'll be talking about later tonight, so it's always helpful to get a little bit of a preview of that. I've got a couple of projects, or three projects up on Just Serve for Meadow Ridge Park. Last I looked, they, they hadn't been approved yet, but they'll be coming and just some park cleanup, for example, and some painting, things like that. So look for those if you're looking for a project. They're going to be out there.
Is that listed on Just Serve?
It's on Just Serve, yeah. It's not approved yet. I haven't seen it go live, but hopefully any second. Sometimes it takes a couple of weeks. I don't know why, but. At our last mosquito abatement meeting, we talked about the upcoming budget. We'll be working on that in the following meeting. We had a discussion with Zion's Bank. They've had, they said their, their account number somehow got on the dark web and just was out and about, so they've put some security measures in place, science to help that, but that makes it difficult to cash checks, and so they have to call one of the trustees and verify that the check was actually valid and that was supposed to be sent out before they'll actually cash that check, so. This is creating a little bit of a hiccup there, but I think it'll get ironed out. We have, last I saw, five horses with West Nile virus and seven human cases. Three or four of those were in Logan, but they've also traps of tested positive in Nibley now. That's the closest to Providence we've seen, so I think we have to assume it's here in Providence too. 10 of the 16 traps placed around the valley tested positive this time. Luckily mosquito season is winding down, so hopefully we're not going to get bitten, hopefully no cases here this year, but I, it's a matter of time, I think, until that happens, so. What else? On a positive note, the traps were down about 4,000 mosquitoes from this time last year. So there are less, which they're taking to mean that their efforts last year were, were effective generally and that the population just wasn't around as much. It was also a drier year this year, which may have played into that too. I think that's about it. I didn't get any citizen emails, so email me if you want to ask something. Willing to take, I'm willing to take them. Jeff, Jeff gets all the phone.
He's listed on the website.
I'm there.
I don't, I don't know. I'm up by the Highlands Development that is going nuts.
Yeah, yeah.
Getting some conversation.
Yeah, I'll take, I'll take some of those, so. That's my report.
Conversation is always good. That's one of the goals that, that I had as I became mayor, and that was for us to be together, to talk with one another, communicate effectively, and make sure that we have a dialogue going and we can solve any issues that come up before they get out of control. I don't have any specific, anything specific to, to mention other than my job is to be out in the community, meeting with people, understanding what other people are doing, helping other cities, helping organizations, so that when it comes time for us, that we need some help from them. You know, there's no reason to reinvent the wheel if other people are doing things, so. I've been out talking to a lot of groups, talking to a lot of people, meeting with people, and I just want to urge everyone that's listening online. I know we have like a lot, right?
A lot come later, but we have a few now and we get a lot later. It's nice to have it. It's recorded and live.
Right, so people can go watch it. But the state is going to assess all of this, a water fee. They'll make it, us put it on our water bill, so it makes, makes it look like it's coming from us, but it's not. It will be, it's mandated by the state. And I saw a map today, the areas that are going to be assessed, an additional fire fee. If you are close to the mountain, you will be assessed. It'll be up to $700 a year on your taxes, on your tax bill. We need to talk about that with our legislature, with the legislators. We need to make sure that they understand the issues. And it said that if you have done some mitigating around your property and can show that you've mitigated the fire danger for your home, that, that certainly might help cut down your fee, but it won't take it away. I had, I have a hillside that's just above my house, and I had my yard guys come and weed eat most of the hill so that it's away from the back of my property, but I have trees next to my home, which would catch on fire. So we'll see how that comes out, but as the public, we need to, we need to stand up and say, wait a minute, there was no truth in taxation. It really is a tax. They'll call it a fee, but it's really a tax. So please look that up on the legislature. The, the fire assessment is House Bill 48. So you can go look at that and see what it, what it says and how it's going to be applied and what it might mean for you and your home, depending on where you live, so.
Highly likely that the state will collect more in property tax off this than the city does.
Wow.
Just to, just to give that as a magnitude of, of what we're talking about, this is a tax above the entire property tax to the city. It is highly likely that the, that the state, this is the, this is the first time the state's coming on property tax, that they will take more of your property tax than the city receives. In some places, it will be two to three times the amount that you're paying to the city. This is a big deal, and if people aren't aware, they should be. This is, this is a railroad coming down the pike. The bill has already passed. This is coming. It is, it is the discussion of implementation right now. And the water one, this is the first time the state has had a direct connection to our water bills. This is, this is concerning.
Well, and where are they going to spend the money that they get? You know, if we don't have a fire here, the money that we paid into it goes to some other place to be spent to fight a fire, which I don't want people's homes to burn, but I'm not sure that this is the best way for us to implement it. And I would certainly want to know where that money's being spent, so.
Mayor, has the league stepped up on this? I haven't seen much from the league on this.
League has sent out some, but this is, now we're into the implementation rather than fighting the, the bill. It, it, we're in the implementation.
But I understand that, but I didn't see this coming as the league comments in the legislation. It wasn't a, seemed to be a priority to them.
I didn't see it on a mass level either, so I agree.
It was never part of what they were, they were.
They may have. I, I agree with you. I didn't see it as a high issue.
I don't read all of them as their summaries, but I do read a lot of them. And boy, I sure never picked up on the fact that this was coming down the line to be the magnitude that we're seeing, or even on them, you know, that it was a concern.
And the property tax assessment will start January 1st.
Yeah, so it's coming. It'll be here.
Our, our map adopted by the end of the year, so it, it's coming. Railroad coming fast.
Do you know what the water bill number was?
I don't.
You know, it's a few cents per thousand gallons right now, and so the volume of, of that isn't as great. It's the, it's the change that they have a direct link to billing onto the water bill that they've never had before. So I think it's three and a half, three and a half cents per thousand gallons, or I think it's three and a half cents per thousand gallons. So not a, I mean, as, as a water system, we're looking at about a 50,000, as a city, we're looking about $50,000. In total, we use, I think we use about a billion gallons a year. And so we're looking at, at around a $50,000 bill, so certainly we'll have to pass that along. And we will go from meter reading nine months of the year, we'll go to a 12-month reed system, billing for it year-round, which will, which they'll require us to do, so.
I think you hit the nail on the head when you talked, was it Casey Snyder, regarding the fact that this is just getting the camel's nose in the door?
I asked him that, and he, he admitted that it is the camel's nose in the, in the, in the tent, and that there's more to come.
Yeah, this is just seeing how much smoke is going to fly up from this and the way they'll go. If they can overstep and drop in taxes like that, this is, it's something to be very concerned about.
It's disturbing.
You know, the, the public ought to know at, at least that these things are, are present. So as, as the council is, is asked questions or the public that's listening and, and knowing, th- these are coming down.
That's Senate Bill 80.
Oh, Senate Bill 80 is the water one.
Yeah.
And Casey was the bill sponsor.
A sponsor of both.
The House sponsor, right? Was he the House sponsor of the other two?
Yeah.
So this is our representative for our area passing these bills.
Okay, so we'll close that portion of the meeting, and I will entertain a motion on the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August 20th, 2025.
Okay, so we have a mo- motion on the minutes for August 20th, 2025? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All abstain. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That's one abstention. Public comment? I will allow public comment for anything that is not listed on the agenda that is under our purview, so. Darcy, did you?
So first of all, on behalf of the Fox Ridge neighborhood, we would like to thank the Public Works guys for actually repairing some asphalt on South Sherwood. We appreciate the, the job that they did, and apparently it came to their attention as they were driving their, their snowplow over it this winter, that it was pretty rough, and so we appreciate them fixing it. My other concern is actually on 100 Northern Providence, and I've asked Ryan to bring up a map so that we can all kind of see what we're looking at. Right there, I believe it's called the Uptown Park. We've got a, a park there that's right by the elementary school. And right there, there's also parallel parking that is allowed there, and I personally.
Angle parking.
Oh, sorry. Yes, diagonal parking, angle parking, sorry. And I feel like where I drive that road regularly, that those cars are out in the roadway and that it's not, unless there's a really small car, it's really hard to actually not cross over the double yellow lines or drive on the double lines when there's cars parked there. And so I would like to recommend that we actually get staff to go out and measure that road, to see what the road width is. And then actually, I know Scarlett in the past has looked up the vehicle lanes of Suburbans and full-size pickups, and that we actually take those lanes and measure those on that diagonal parking, and then kind of see where we're at. Do we actually have, I mean, are my, it's like complaint legit? And do we have, after we've measured that, do we have like two inches to spare, or do we have a foot to spare? And, because I'm seeing it from a public safety standpoint, that we really don't have the room there. I would probably recommend going with parallel parking so that we don't have as many vehicles out in the road. If we did that, I know that there'd be some complaints, well, there's not, we can't park as many vehicles. I'm not sure what our agreement is with the elementary schools in the Kesh County School District, but we do share parks with them, and on my way here, I saw that at the middle school parking, that there, that, that parking lot was pretty much full with all the park users. Or it seemed like there was a lot of park users there and it probably overflowing. And just directly south of that park is the elementary school parking lot, and so I'm just curious if after hours, if it would be appropriate for those vehicles to go to the south side of that park instead of on the north side of that park and actually make that roadway a lot safer. I would hate to see a kid dart out and you don't even see him because the vehicles are so far on the road and have an accident. And then I just had one question, and maybe I can get an answer during the staff reports. I was expecting to have a wellhouse built up on the north bench, and it seems to be an invisible wellhouse right now. I, there's no dirt that's been disturbed, so thank you.
It's in design. It hasn't been built. It is in design.
We're not doing stealth buildings.
Might be a bunker, at least partly underground, but.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, I'll close that portion of the meeting, and we don't have any public hearings tonight. So tonight we have an appointment to the Planning Commission. We did have two, but Tyler Riggs withdrew his, his application. And so tonight we have Robert Perry, who is, has been a member of the Planning Commission and came, was, had to come off because he, his work hours were interfering with the times of the meetings, but then he said he'd like to do it again. So Bob, if you'd like to come up and talk to us about your background and.
I sent you a copy of the resume.
Yes.
I don't know if the rest of you have seen it.
Yes, they got him.
Okay. Any questions on that? By the way, my name is Bob Perry. The reason why I had to leave was Forest Service gave me a call, and I couldn't refuse them. It was a good way to learn, I had just recently moved here, and it was a good way to learn my area, which came from, which started at the Idaho border down to Ogden, over to Huntsville, over the top of Monte Cristo, and back into Woodruff and Randolph and back. So it was a big area to cover, and it was two busy years of chasing campers around, if you want to call them. Any questions for me? After that, I got a call from DNR, so I was employed with DNR for a while, for about a year and a half, almost two years. As the mayor said, I worked at the Planning Commission for maybe a couple of years here, I think.
Yes, he was chair. When I came on, he was chair.
And I also worked in that capacity back in New York. I was chair of the County Planning Commission and worked with the county. Our main concern back in New York, if you want to hear it, was solar people were coming in, buying up a lot of land from the farmers, and not telling the farmers that they were going to lose their agricultural credits. So it was, we had to step in and shake up the solar companies and have them do, had, had them do their work and notify the farmers, which was a big deal, because we had a lot of big farms in rural upstate New York, and a lot of solar panels went in. So I got some free time and I'd like to get back on the Planning Commission. Maybe I can help a little bit there.
Do you have any suggestions for us how to interface with Providence Canyon and the Forest Service?
I think I talked to you about that, didn't I?
It's a mystery.
I don't know.
I, I think we've talked in the past about it.
Yeah.
It's kind of tricky, but if there's any way we can like make things.
Yeah.
Cultivate that relationship, I guess, you know?
I think the big glitch there is after you leave the road where Laura Fisher lives, that area becomes county land, and Forest Service doesn't kick in until after the second cattle guard. So.
So there is a buffer between there. That's, that's interesting. I didn't know that.
Yeah, county land.
Well, we appreciate what you do, Bob, and your willingness to serve.
Well, I'll keep an eye on it, you know. I, I see a lot of the Forest Service guys over to the DNR office, so. Whenever I can find out, I'll pass it along.
That'd be good. Thank you.
We appreciate your willingness to serve. It's great to have you back.
Got a lot of free time on my hands. I don't want to mow lawns 24 hours a day, so.
Pat says he has to get something to do.
You could fish. You know, but we appreciate your service.
Yes, thank you.
Well, Bob always did his homework, and I served together on it, and I came on when he was chair. Oh, no, you, you became chair after I came on.
Correct.
Because Sontag was there when I first came on. And then I became chair when he decided he needed to. You stepped down for a little while, but then it was just too much time.
Yeah, yeah. Forest Service, it just took a lot of time.
Yeah.
On the road all the time.
But Bob always did his homework. He always. But Bob always did his homework. He always knew what we were talking about and we appreciate his efforts to be involved in the city. So thank you.
Thank you.
So any, any other questions?
Just gratitude.
Thank you.
Experience matters.
Hopefully.
Okay, thank you.
You need a motion to, to have more, okay.
I was gonna let him sit down first. Okay, so I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Bob Perry to the, uh, Providence City Planning Commission.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
Second. Well, it's okay.
Okay.
Um, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number four is Resolution zero seven dash two zero two five, cancellation of the mayoral election race. Ryan, I'm gonna let you take this one.
Sure. Um, and I might pass it on to Ty as, as we go. But at this point, um, the, we've hired the, uh, county to run the, um, run the election for us. Uh, it's their recommendation and, and really they've proceeded with it. And because there isn't a opponent in the, in the race, their, their, uh, recommendation and, and their, their direction is to cancel the mayoral race. So it's that simple. There's not a, um, it's not any preference. It's not any, um, anything other than there is no other candidate other than yourself. And since there's only one candidate, um, the counting of it, th- they're saying, hey, there's no point in counting and, and measuring and doing that work when, when there's a single candidate. And, uh, so anyway, Ty, anything you want to add to that?
No, yeah, you don't want to have to do more work. The general sample ballot was approved last week. That's how I found out that the mayor relates. So I mean, the county's already taken that election off, on that race off, so this coming general election will just be uh, voting for the two council seats. We have got the four candidates and that sample ballot will probably go out, um, end of this week sometime and you'll see that. Again, it's just a sample ballot. Ballot will go out in a couple of weeks, so.
Is this something that I should recuse myself from?
You won't vote on it anyway.
I don't vote anyway.
You won't be able to vote, but you could count, call a motion, but you wouldn't be able to vote.
Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion then.
Can I just make a comment?
Yeah.
Um, I, I know some people like to have the option for write-in voting, but just so people are aware that it is required in state code that a write-in candidate has to declare sixty-five days before the election. And we're past that threshold, so there really shouldn't be any issue to do this.
Yeah.
So.
Good comment. Good comment. Thank you. I'll make a motion.
Go ahead. I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution nine seven, or excuse me, zero seven dash two zero two five, cancellation of the mayoral election race.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Um, we don't have any agreements, contract bids, awards? No plans or other business, but we do have a study item. So, um, talking about the general plan, we hear a lot about the general plan. Reason we have a plan, so that we get to where we want to be. And tonight, we wanted to introduce that and talk about the general plan and how we are performing, uh, with the general plan. And so Ryan is going to take this item number five. Talk about the first three pages of the general plan.
Three specific pages of the general plan. Thank you. Yeah, I will. Uh, what we have, so I, first of all, I want to show you, this is our website. If you go to government and master plans and then hit the general plan here on the side, it will bring up the general plan. So this is what we're looking at and, uh, so this is, we're not opening it, we're not changing it, we're not rewording it. This is a status update. So this is, um, I've had Ty list this as a study item because I want this to be a, a two-way discussion um, uh, between myself and the council and, uh, so that you can understand what we're doing and, and, and why we're doing some of the things. So as we look at this, I wa- what I want you to do is I want you to go, um, first of all, I want to bring your attention, I'm gonna go down here in pages. This six key initiative, uh, these are this, are identified as the six key initiatives of the city. They are plastered behind you. Every spot you go in the city hall, you'll find it very prevalent. It is in every office that the city, that in the city, uh, building here and, uh, and we have it prominently displayed in both the reception area and the council room and this is, this is the plan as we understand it. And we are trying to make sure that everybody is, is well aware of what and why we're doing it. Both the staff, the planning commission, the, the city council, the residents. So these are the six initiatives and so I just highlight those. Hopefully, because we've talked about it and, and been bringing this up, we've highlighted each of these in the newsletter, uh, or if we haven't, we'll continue to do that. And so this year, we're trying to make sure that everybody's kind of aware. That was my goal in the first year is to make sure everybody's aware of, of the general plan. So this is a six key initiative. I hope that you have them. I, I have them certainly, I have them memorized. I hope that you have them memorized and I, I think we ought to give a quarter to every resident that has them memorized. So.
Their water bill.
Well, there's a lot, yeah.
Put it on the water bill.
That might take, that, that might take care of the, uh, amount that Casey's just asked for. So what I'd bring your attention to is this page here. It is the framework for the pla- for the, uh, framework for the future. What it does is it takes the each key initiative and breaks down specific objectives under that, um, initiative. And, uh, so what I'd like to do is I'd like to go through each one of these as much as time emits. I, I, I kind of expected an hour and a half, maybe two hours for this exercise, so, please understand the timeframe. If we start to go beyond that, you know, feel free, cut me off. But that's kind of my timeframe for this. So anybody in the public or audience, that's my expectation is, is probably an hour and a half to two hours for this exercise. And, uh, so anyway, a- and, and as I've gone through some, what are you doing? What are you doing? Okay, as long as you promise to watch it online.
Double speed.
She probably will watch it online, so let, let her go. But just, just so people are aware of what, what this kind of is expected to go. So what I'd like to do, um, for this exercise is to read the objective. And then be able to ask or, or maybe, maybe a council member, um, uh, or staff can, can indicate whether we're, you know, thumbs up that we're doing it, um, or not doing it. And, uh, and maybe we can give some examples of maybe how we're doing it or not. So this is kind of a interactive exercise. Don't feel bad if you have a thumbs up and your neighbor has a thumb down, thumbs down. This is, this is somewhat of how we perceive, um, this to be accomplished. So there might be some discussions of how we're accomplishing some better than others and maybe you're more aware that we're accomplishing one and maybe not aware of another. So, anyway. So don't feel bad if your thumbs are, are different in order and whatever, so. Objective number one, a- and planning commission members, please, please use your thumbs up and thumbs down. This is an exercise I'd like to do in, in the planning commission as well, so please be interactive and, and Hal, I know you're always, always around, so please. This, this is a, this is a, um, activity for all. So the objective, number one, guide future development to support citywide network of activity centers, public spaces and destinations, including a commercial area, neighborhood parks, historic areas and civic places, all linked by streets, sidewalks, paths, trails and mass transit routes. So thumbs up if you think we're accomplishing that, thumbs down if you don't, if you think we're not. Come on, I'm looking, I'm looking. Thumbs down, okay. Everybody else? Okay, all right. And, uh, anybody want to say how they think we're accomplishing the object, this objective?
I think we're doing a great job on the streets, sidewalks, pathways and trails, but I'm not concerned. I'm a little concerned to how mass transit's coming into that other than the sauerkraut days when we take people around to the historic places.
Yes, agreed, agreed. So I think we are accomplishing in portions of it. And, uh, and there is some piece of the puzzle that maybe with, with, beyond our current scope. And, uh, I don't think we're going to have the return of the trolley, um, although we had one. But I don't think the return of the trolley is coming anytime soon or, um, the, uh, the tracks is probably not on its way, so.
Well, we had a, a railroad at one time.
We did.
The trolley, right.
And it was
Yeah.
And it was all around torn up because we had cars.
Yeah.
Didn't need.
The station used to haul rock right down there at, uh, on Third South and Second West is where the, the wagons brought rock in there.
Yeah, I've read through the histories and I think that would be fun to see today, but we're, we're not currently working on that piece of the puzzle, so you're correct.
Right.
But we are working on lots of the rest, so I appreciate that. So the next one.
The other thing is mass transit, it, we can support mantra- mass transit, but we're not really in charge of that.
Right.
So it's hard to judge us on that.
Yeah, hard to judge us. They have gone to the pool. They've tried a few other things for the community, um, but we're not, we're not directing that. Uh, we're more in a support role in that spite, if, if, if that. So objective number two, create parks as places of open spaces and centers of community activity. Good? Public here, okay. All right, I think, uh, I, I think we've got most of those. So anybody want to take a stab of how you think we're accomplishing this?
Drive past the skate park.
Drive past that skate park, absolutely. That's absolutely a good example. Sidewalks. If you drive past the new playgrounds we've put in, uh, in the last five years, each one, the, the use of new playgrounds is so much higher than the use of, of older ones. It's, it's amazing. So we've got, um, Brager that's done, Hillcrest that is, is, uh, selected and, and moving forward. We appreciate the public input that we've, we received on that. And, uh, so we'll get that done. And, uh, so, so yes, we're definitely working on that one. Okay.
Well, and we've purchased two other properties.
We've, yeah.
Coming as parks.
Right, right. The, uh, the new, the new, uh, Thompson Field is set to be able to have the weeds removed in the next week or two and leveled out and, and start it, so they should have that sprinkler system done and plant in the, um, plant in the fall. And we'll see it another year, year and a half before we have heavy usage on that, but that's coming.
I was told by Shane that we've got, uh, is it a year or two years, we've got a ball tournament, baseball tournament, gonna be centered here in Providence. Is that correct?
That's our hope. That's what, that's what we're working on. I don't know that the, i- it's been finalized or not.
He was pretty excited about it.
We are definitely excited. We, we love, we love the, um, abilities we have, but the soc- the soccer, the lacrosse we now, uh, support, um, the, uh, the baseball that we have, the, um, the skate park, we have a lot of those and.
The two fields have been upgraded as well.
Yeah, and at this point, this is establishing spaces for community activities. As, as has been mentioned, that Providence, uh, sauerkraut days has been, uh, amazing and to add um, amenities and things to that park to help, um, help that is, is also part of that, so. All right, improve walkability and bikeability of the city. Accomplishing? No, all right. So, uh, anybody want to describe how we're accomplishing this? Who you want to take it?
We added a ton of bike lanes.
We, we added, we added almost thirteen miles of bike lanes. And, uh, and with the state's regulation, now, now it's being enforced not to park in. We were starting off on a soft approach, but, um, yeah, we've added thirteen miles of bike lanes. Yep.
I've got out there and used some of those bike lanes, but mine has training wheels on it. So it's a tricycle and I got my wife a tricycle coming and we're gonna start using those bike lanes.
Yes.
Motorized. Oh, that power I like. From that hills is good.
We, we have cut over seven thousand trip hazards in the city. Uh, we have installed and, and updated, uh, various pieces of sidewalk. We have eighty-nine percent of all streets have a sidewalk on one side or the other. And, uh, at this point, uh, we have a requirement for all new, uh, subdivisions, uh, to put in, in sidewalk. Are we complete? No. Are we making progress? Yes, but far from complete.
I, I'd love to hear suggestions from the, the sideways or side, I don't know.
Anybody want to comment on that one? Yeah, Bob? Yeah, you probably have to come because you have to get on the mic, but.
I live at one oh four North Main. Uh, it's an intersection of Main and, uh, North Main, or.
One hundred North.
One hundred North.
One hundred North and Main, yep.
About a couple of months ago, I just sat down on my patio and I started counting cars. And I'm averaging, I had an average of a hundred and seventy-seven cars per hour uh, going past my house. Okay, we, I can understand that. A lot of it, a lot of it's coming off the bench. I also have our motorized vehicles on the sidewalk. We also have, it's kind of a narrow, I, I think it's a narrow road, maybe too narrow for a bike lane, First North. I'm not sure.
But we have some design to put in a bike lane, uh, and expand, expand that as we go. Especially once we get the road completed from, uh, First East to, uh, west or, uh, yeah, e- west, east of there, from First East, uh, east towards the, uh, towards Fourth East. We actually have an application that, that is, um, that we're working up the, uh, the priority list uh, to potentially widen and complete that road, which would, which would then have a bike lane all the way from, from First, from Main, um, to Fourth East potentially.
I know the sidewalks are working good. Because we have a senior cent- not a senior center, but senior living just down the street from me. A lot of the seniors pass by, they stop in, we shoot the breeze. And, uh, but with the motorized bikes on the sidewalk, uh, I think that's a, uh, that could be a hazard.
It, it is a violation of state law. When, once a bike lane is, is, i- if there is no bike lane, then they can use either sidewalk or road. Once a bike lane is established, then they must u- a bike or, or motorized bike must use the bike lane. But until the point that it's established, they can use either. And that's one of the benefits of having a bike lane is because it has a dedicated place for bikes and motorized bikes. Um, but until such time that we put in a lane, they can use either.
Okay.
That's some of the reason why it's beneficial to have a, a, a bike-specific spot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Walkability is good. It's just that, uh, the bikes are on the sidewalk and we have some senior center, seniors that are walking on the sidewalk also and.
Yeah, that's why we need a bike lane. Honestly, that's why we need a bike lane on First North. And we have it in the, in the plan. It's in the plan. It, it's, has a grant application to help us complete the widening, uh, east of First East. Um, and so we're working towards that one.
Do, do you have any idea what the average count is for a street for traffic?
Off the top of my head, I don't, but every time we put in traffic counters, um, and we vary those, if you'll see the speed limit signs, uh, and we spread those out throughout the, 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 uh, city and move them around, uh, we're actually counting volume of traffic on all of those.
Okay.
So we do have traffic counts, so we, we regularly count traffic. But thank you for counting and we, we appreciate the feedback.
Okay, thank you.
So when you, I just have a question. When you say a hundred and seventy-seven cars, is that on First North, not Main Street?
First North, correct. Going, uh, east and west.
Okay.
My highest number was two oh eight, but when I. but when I averaged everything up from three o'clock until six thirty, it was a hundred and seventy-seven. That's a lot of traffic.
It's a lot of traffic.
So that's a three and a half hour time period you're talking about, Bob?
Uh, s- three o'clock to six thirty, yeah, three and a half.
So about fifty, uh, sixty cars an hour?
No, he's, I think he counted that many per hour.
Oh, is that per hour?
I know it's easier, or a lot busier in the morning, everybody's leaving, coming off the bench, and of course they're coming back from work. But that three o'clock to six thirty, I thought maybe I would eliminate the heavy traffic in the morning and in the afternoon.
Yeah, uh, once a roundabout goes in, and, and we'll get to there, but uh, or maybe not today, but um, once a roundabout goes in at Third South and Second West, that will alleviate a lot of the bench traffic coming off the Third South rather than the First North, so that will.
People coming off the bench will peel off and go down Third.
All the way to the highway instead of going all the way to First North, so.
My count was uh, anything with gasoline engine, diesel engine trucks, construction trucks.
I don't know why you didn't count horses and, and buggies.
I haven't seen any this year yet.
You should have counted them.
In the past couple of years, I've seen a horse or two go by, but.
I s- I apologize, I'm still confused, is it per hour that you're, you run into that amount?
One seventy-seven, every half hour. At my, I'm, I'm clumping it up into half hour chunks, so it's one seventy-seven per hour.
One seventy-seven.
Average, that's average.
Average, okay, all right.
Three to four thousand vehicles a day on that road is not, uh, that, that number is, is certainly within the realm of we, what we would expect.
That's the number that doesn't stop at my stop sign on Third East.
We're, we're working on that potential too, there's a different project for that one.
An arm.
Um, I, I would bring, I would bring up on this one, that we have a grant to install new sidewalk uh, for, for residents that are looking to put in sidewalk in the front of their house. We have a grant that we pay fifty percent towards that sidewalk. Um, and uh, and in the five years I've been here, we have never fully used the amount set aside for that grant. So if there's anybody out there that wants a sidewalk in front of their house, um, and is willing to, to pay half that cost, uh, we have a grant and, and have continuously done that, it's part of our ordinances, um, and we budget for that every year, and uh, so uh, encourage that if there is anybody that says, hey, I'm just missing a sidewalk in front of my house, if, if they're willing to do that, um, there, we do have that grant, and it's fairly uh, a fairly easy process to go through that, that, that we go through, so anyway, if that.
Does that include the retaining wall too, if needed?
No. It's the, it's the sidewalk, yeah, so. Um, all right, so that's, that's kind of what this exercise is about, so we'll continue on. Um, integrate existing and future development through zoning and infrastructure standards that will offer requirements, solutions, and compatible support options. Who thinks we're accomplishing that? Oh, come on.
Yes, I think we're, I think we're doing a good job.
We have design standards and.
Okay, so anybody doesn't think we're doing any of that, or, or are not working on it? Okay, um, so we're working, we've updated our design stan- our uh, um, zoning standards. We're working on a infrastructure design standard update, uh, this year, um, so that we can, i- we can uh, bring that into more standardized, um, so our standard specs that we're working on. Um, so a lot of that is being worked on, uh, especially the code, uh, multifamily housing and uh, um, some of our higher density uh, zoning, uh, includes that, and uh, where we can, we, we have some of that included, so. Um, promote developed patterns and conservation development design that protect Providence's natural environment and scenic resources and a network of preserved na- natural spaces as part of residential development process. Who thinks we're accomplishing that or not? Thumbs up or thumbs down?
I think we're working on it.
Some, some no, some maybe. All right, how do you think, what, what, what do you, what do you think we are or aren't doing? Anybody want to comment on that one?
I think we're trying to preserve trees.
Okay, we're trying to preserve trees and green space?
I think we're trying to.
We are.
We, we've acquired, we've acquired properties with scenic value, um, and uh, and as we restore that scenic value, um, we'll be able to have that. I think the, the uh, Hillside Park there off First East, when we get that trail put in, that's a nice scenic value and connection. Um, our Grand View Park, uh, is definitely along this uh, objective. Um, have we accomplished it? No, um, but.
But we're working on it.
A work in progress.
I think the map that's on the page before this, on three dash four, where it highlights, um, what is the wording it says? Preservation corridors or, I think it had purple on it, I don't know.
Here, I've got.
I've got it up, I had it color coded. It has like a thin purple line around it, potential conservation zones is what they're called.
Hmm.
Um, I think only one of those is not developed. So, um, I think it might be worthwhile, and, and not the, and I'm not sure, I feel like these maps need updated, but I think that with um, if there was a development within a preservation zone, conservation zone, that they um, probably should have some type of green space requirement that they're required to contribute to the city. Just, I feel like that would be in line with what we're trying to do.
But they're all developed.
Some are more developed than others, I mean, the, the, the one here on the south, that, that lot is still available. Uh, has, some of it's been developed, not all. Um, some in the, in that south one, the, around the Fourth East one, a lot of that's been developed, but some, there, there is an open space there. We did offer to, to buy that ten acres and we had a contract until they told us no. So we tried, I mean, we're working, but haven't been successful in some of that. Um, this one on the east side, that is what we're have a, have a uh, um, option to buy, right? So that one's clearly what we, we're in that one.
We've done some up there on that vert.
Um, and the north one, there is a parcel, we've, we've approached them to, to acquire a piece of that and been denied, um.
Why don't you drag them?
But, but I think, I think having.
Put the map up.
Scroll the map down so that they can see it. Um, I know that we have, we ask, but maybe that's something to consider by ordinance. If it is identified in our general plan as a conservation area, that as the development agreements come into place, that there should maybe be an extra amount of green space requirement, whether it's the trailhead or.
It would be a great council proposed, uh, yeah.
Just throwing my ideas up there.
I love it. I think it's great. I, and, and the planning commission that's here, it would go through their process and, and would go through them, so at some point, they can bring that up as well, and, and, and knowing, knowing the plan helps us to, to look at those, right? I mean, that's why we, that's why we do this review, so that we're looking for those things that we are, hey, here is something in the plan, we're not fulfilling as much as we could be, let's maybe take a look at that. Absolutely, that, that's part of this exercise, so that's, that's great points. Um, as, as we brought it down, there is one parcel left here. Uh, there is a, a couple of parcels left here, and uh, and this is some that we have under, under um, contractor option. And there is development in most of this, there is a little bit over here and a few uh, various spots that haven't developed yet, but are, are certainly coming. Uh, some have, have been planned and proposed, so. Yeah. Anyway. Okay.
But that's why we do this exercise.
Yeah, absolutely, so we can flush out some of that, right?
What we've done, and then everybody's on the same page.
No, thank you, that, that's good feedback. Um, next one, pro- provide value to the community's character and identity by maintaining and improving the aesthetics of streets and public rideaways. Everybody think we're achieving or not, any?
They love the new lights.
Yes, the new lights that the, that the.
The dark sky ones.
Yep, we've, we've improved all of the lights, uh, all the three.
Makes the street brighter, but doesn't shine up into the.
And if you go to farther the objectives, it talks about the dark sky aesthetics. Um, I would say, uh, our streets look as good as, as any of the others, except for maybe Logan that has a lot more money than we do. Ours look really good, we have more striping that we've been able to accomplish. Um, our street sweeper's been out fairly regularly the last, uh, last year. And uh, and being able to have that, um, curb appeal and, and trying to really uh, improve the aesthetics of the streets, um, and our rideaways is coming along, and a lot of it's due to our residents there. Um, I think as we've improved streets and roads in the downtown area, you'll see that they've improved their, the rideaways that are adjacent. And uh, so this is kind of a joint effort, um, but, yeah.
I think the use of salt rather than salt and sand, and I know it's been a period of time since we've used sand, but it sure has uh, improved our streets. I really do think that's good.
Cause there's not as much junk on the side.
Pardon me?
Cause there's not as much junk on the side.
Yeah, it's not dirty, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
Still think the county needs to be aware of their rideaways, especially around Zollinger Park and the goat heads that get stuck tires and shoes.
I agree, we have a new county executive as of last night.
And put that in my council report, a county executive from Providence.
Yeah.
Len Lemon.
Representing.
Yeah, that's great. All right, uh, minimize negative impact to watershed, groundwater, canal, spring, streams, rivers, and aqua- uh, on our aquatic system. Who thinks we're accomplishing and who doesn't?
I think the agreements with the water companies has been incredible, um, because it's allowed us to do things with the water that we've never been able to do before, so.
Yep, that's great. Um, thank you, and, and one of those, we, we had a big project to help uh, clean out the stream two years ago. Uh, and that was a big, um, project with both the, uh, water companies, the city, and, and the residents. Um, we also, uh, uh, every new well and, and every resource we have, um, we have agreements, uh, that are, are in place or, or being in, or working, worked on uh, to, to maintain that, uh, um, that impact of, of the watershed and, and, and the groundwater, so. Um, anyway, uh.
Ryan?
Yep.
I think that uh, even uh, youth groups of the Church of God involved, Kerry's been involved in this cleaning up uh, Providence Canyon, helping getting the trash out of the canyon where our water will flow from.
I agree, I think it's been great. Um, over the last couple of years, we've had several of those activities. Um, protect surface and groundwater resources from pollution and depletion. Think we're accomplishing or not? How do you think we're accomplishing that objective? Ready?
Well, yeah, signage on the storm drains, um, that kind of tell people what they should or should not be washing down there, so, I mean, I think maybe they need updated, they are a little worn, but I, I think that's definitely an education component.
Yeah, agreed.
And I think all the containment basins we've been putting, have people put in is a good way to protect and filter the water before it seeps in the ground.
Great. Um, I, I think we have, we have stormwater, uh, and uh, ponds and, and some of those. Uh, we have a very robust, uh, tracking mechanism, uh, for the stormwater protection program. And uh, and our stormwater, um, uh, technician here, um, staff member, it does a really good job of going out and, and keeping and protecting those. Um, he does a really good job in that. Colton's, Colton's really, uh, extremely valuable, and uh, and we have a, a system that, that we can kind of go through, um, a computerized tracking mechanism that he, he inspects, uh, each of those areas, so. Anyway, we are doing it whether people see it or not, we, we certainly are focusing the resources on it. Okay, um, retain open spaces and scenic views that contribute to the character of Providence. Think we're achieving, not achieving? All right, anybody want to comment on that one? How we're achieving or not achieving?
Got lost, where are we?
Uh, objective, uh, retain open spaces and scenic views.
There's a lot of objectives.
Oh, yeah. I noticed that was kind of a repeat.
Give us your thumbs down, Brent.
I, I have a concern. I don't know. Those buildings really get high. And they're high density, and uh, I guess you have to overlook the buildings to sometimes see the sunset. Um, I wished we could do more, but we don't have a lot of space. And space is a premium here in Providence, and I understand that. Uh, sometimes to see the sunset, you have to get in the street, cause that's what you can actually have a check on the sunset or something like that, so. I wished we could do more, I, and I don't know how we do more, but it has changed character, in my opinion.
Okay, yep, I, that's probably, that's valid. Um, I listed some of the park, the properties we've purchased and a thirty percent slope restriction. To be able to keep the thirty percent slopes, um, having that restriction, I think adds to uh, keeping that, that scenic views and, and some of those things, so that every, um, although there's building in flat areas, as we go up, we have those open, um, open areas between, uh, between housing with that thirty percent slope.
But we also have some huge trees in Providence. They're very tall, that block your views as well. It's not buildings, it's, it's trees.
Some is trees.
One of the nice things about Providence, you can always look up and enjoy the mountains.
Absolutely.
You know, a lot of people like to be high on the hill, so they look ups. Me, I'm happy to be downtown and look at the mountains.
Yeah.
We addressed lighting.
Just lighting?
About interferes with people's scenic views. I don't think we wanted to pass a law on lights, but we talked about it.
Yeah.
We had a discussion.
Right, and we brought it up, we visited about it, and, and brought, brought attention to the issue. I, I agree. Thanks. All right, next one, secondary water system developed to reduce demands on city culinary system. Achieving, not achieving, uh, what's the votes?
You sideways, are you up?
I think we've clearly reduced demand on the city's culinary system with the agreements we've come up with. And so, that makes it so we don't really need the secondary water system because we're tapping in to the water at the spring.
Yeah, I, and that's where I was at, um, with, with mine, because of the, because of the use of, of water through our si- through our what would have been considered secondary water at the time of this draft, we've converted some of that over to a, um, to municipal use. Um, we've expanded our city culinary system, and, and because of our demands, uh, or our ability to use, uh, water that we have, um, ability to through our ownership in the, in the water companies, um, we've certainly had a reduction in the demand of the culinary system, and uh, but it, it hasn't been a pressurized secondary irrigation system. Um, and we haven't put that in. Um, but as we look at it, the cost of doing an actual pressurized, uh, irrigation system, um, it would require us to put in basically a duplication of our entire culinary system and uh, and including storage and filtering, and then we would have to change or um, drain the meters, uh, every year and, and reconnect them every, every year. Um, so I think we were achieving the objective, but not in exactly the same way, so. Um, maybe on the next revision of, of a, of a, of a general plan, we'd come and revise how to achieve that. But I think we've been working to achieve the intent, but maybe not the exact letter, if that makes sense. So, okay. Working cooperatively with the Utah Division of Forestry, Fire, and State Lands to protect non-federal land from wildfire. Achieving, not achieving?
I think they took it out of our hands. They're gonna charge us.
They certainly mandated it instead of, uh, instead of working together, they've mandated.
Right.
I agree. Um, I am working on that report, um, and, and have, and am spending, uh, some time, I've sent. uh, some time I've sent it out to, I think Mary, you've seen that report. I think some of the other staff have seen it and and other, um, affected entities, uh, we were working with them, um, but they certainly moved up the needle to to make it a a mandate instead of the work and cooperate together, so.
But it doesn't hurt to put out information about protecting our property and understanding the wildfire danger that we have living this close to the mountains, so.
We have that in our city code. We have things, but it's always had to be encouraged because we couldn't mandate it. Cause the state won't let us put mandates on single family homes like that, but we can encourage definite design.
Yeah.
Even an education component about how much distance people need to clean their trees from the roofline and different things like that. Maybe it'd be worth adding to the newsletter.
And and.
And adding this uh, legislation, education as well.
But once this legislation is in effect, uh, the county is going to go out and supervise how well you've done. Uh, and everybody in the identified area, they're going to go out and super and uh, assess and uh, and identify what you should or shouldn't do on a individual assessment basis.
Is this fee set to support more oversight on the mitigation? They're gonna pay more people to go house to house and watch.
No, they're not gonna pay. The county's gonna have to take care of that. The state collects the money. The county's gonna have to assess.
Interesting. That's why I said I I wanna see what this money's gonna pay.
I think it's a fear of what the, what California went through and they're preparing and building a fund so that if something like California happens, they have a fund already prepared. So, whether you agree or disagree, it's just what is happening and 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 we're looking at how we're cooperating with it, so. Um, we don't have a choice to cooperate at this point, so. Um, floodplain and storm water management and mitigation. Achieving, uh, working on, uh, anybody not? Alright, that's again back to the other one. Our compliance officer, um, i- is really active in in making sure that each of those areas, um, with the, with the storm waters is there and and we take uh, different trainings and and updates. We've seen updates on the floodplain. Um, every application floodplain becomes a sensitive area and for every application, we evaluate whether they're in a floodplain or not.
Ryan, can I ask you a question? When they, it's been a while since we've had sufficient snowfall to really cause a uh, lot of water coming down Spring Creek. But when it did come, when we had the problem, when we had the problem on Center Street and had to redo that, uh, water way underneath the Center Street, there was a lot of flooding that occurred down in the Brookside area. And has anything been done to mitigate that area down there other than and I don't know, I'm just asking a question. Has anything been done to mitigate that because that definitely flattens out and covers a larger area?
Um, a lot of the Brookside uh, side has been built up and the, um, what's his name on the on the east side? Hubbard. Uh, the Hubbard side, um, is is lower uh, in s- in some of those areas with floods, it would flood more to his side than than the other, um.
To John's side?
Yes, but we also, we with the two years ago, we went through educated and and helped them in preparation of a potential flood. So we have that issue, um, of education that we continue to to get out. Um, and uh, and some of the other things, we we've added storm, uh, uh, stormwater basins uh, since that time where there's been various stormwater, um, detention basins. Um, not necessarily in the creek, but in different areas that would flow into the creek if they weren't there. Um, and uh, so some of that's been accomplished. And uh, uh, also our our, uh, with our water right update, um, and the working with the Spring Creek, we could take, uh, during that flood, we didn't have the the right uh, and the and the preparation to divert all of our water out of of the creek at Broad Hollow and other spots. Um, at this point, we now have the agreements and the water right to be able to do that. Um, and so we've mitigated it based on that. And and we have a plan that if if that flooding were to occur, we would stop the Blacksmith Fork Exchange and we would, we would kick in different water rights to pull out as much water out of out of Spring Creek as we could in order to keep that base low. That's what we did in this last one. Uh, that's one of the reasons why if if we hadn't done that, it would have, it would have overrun its banks.
And so what do we pull out? Three CFSs?
So we're about, um, one and a half, two, we're about two and a half to three, but we could pull, um, we could pull if, uh, almost, almost nine.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I mean, so.
A significant amount.
So we, I mean, yeah, yeah, we can, and we were pulling six plus um, during that, during a couple of years ago, and we did have, uh, a high water. We were pulling quite a bit. We had worked with the, um, uh, with the, with the uh, water resource or water rights office and we'd worked with the, uh, um, the engineer, the state engineer's office to let them know and and how we could work it. But now we have water rights that that allow us without without contacting or asking permission or that. We actually have the dedicated water rights to be able to do that. Um, so we could, we could do that by right rather than by permission. Um, and so some of those things have happened. So, so, uh, we have several things that we've put in place to to mitigate that. Uh, is it everything? Is there a chance? Is there no chance? No, last year, the last time we hire, we rented a track, oh, we have our identified, it identified areas located. Um, and and so it took, uh, direct management of those, uh, floodable spots that we knew. Um, and we were prepared and had equipment hired and stationed at those at those vulnerable spots, so. Anyway, yeah.
Well, I'm glad you have the water rights. We used to have it through Glendadage, but now we have it in writing.
So.
That's a local joke.
Yeah. Yeah, we 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 appreciate Dadage.
Had to have been there to see.
Oh, we appreciate Dadage. Even even now, we still appreciate his help. Um, so, but uh, but yeah, so anyway, um, uh, identify need for municipal services in developed and undeveloped, unincorporated areas. Um, so anybody, are we, we doing this? Have we done this, doing this, uh, not doing it? Anybody have a vote?
We don't have a whole lot of undeveloped, unincorporated areas.
We don't have anymore, but keep in mind, this was drafted five years ago.
Right.
We have had some significant annexations since that point. Um, and all of those areas either annexed or said to be annexed have all been included in our master plans as we proceeded forward. Um, so our master plans, uh, certainly accomplished, uh, the large majority of this, so. Anyway, Janine, were you gonna say something? Sorry.
Exactly what you just said.
Oh, sorry.
For the best.
They they really have accomplished quite a bit. Once they're done and and in in place.
Like eight in our first two and a half years.
But we thought that was normal.
Yeah, yeah. It was not, but we got ahead and once we got these, a lot of this information fed and and dominoed into those plans. So, alright, we're making progress. Let's get through at least another one, another one of these and maybe, um, get through the exercise here and, uh, accommodate growth and accompanying infrastructure expansion without negative financial impacts on the city. Who thinks we're accomplishing? Okay, anybody know? Alright, and how do you think we're accomplishing? Impact fees, exactly. That's what I put. Uh, roads, parks, water, uh, sewer. We have impact fees. Uh, in each one of our master plans as we proceeded forward, we updated that impact fee or amount. So, uh, that was one of the benefits of the master plans was, um, to accomplish that objective as well as as the plan, also the impact fee, so. Um, facilitate consistent quality development uh, that is long lasting and sustainable while allowing design flexibility. Think we're accomplishing, not accomplishing?
I think we're okay with that.
Okay.
Tricky one. That's a tricky one.
A little tricky. I think as much as we can, as much as the state allows, we are. Sometimes the state doesn't allow us to to put too much on, um, on the development. Um, but we're certainly trying to work on that. So, any comments?
I've tried my best to talk with builders about the design.
Yeah.
Without mandating.
I think the buildings that they're building, the designs that they're doing and the layouts of the land, I I'm impressed with what they're doing. They're putting some extra effort into it and and the buildings look nice. Uh, people are happy to live here and and purchase them. I I think that's a a tribute to the developers and builders as they build these homes. They want them to look good. You know, I don't know if they're gonna fall down soon, but yeah.
All depends on when the earthquake comes.
And there's certainly flexibility. We see a variety of of that building. Um, maintain an adequate supply of clean water to meet present and future needs and demands. Think we're accomplishing?
Goes to our
That's a good one.
To our agreements with the water companies.
It does. Anybody else with, uh, I had another piece of it. Just catch and see if anybody else put down what I put. What's that?
Forty year state plan.
Forty year water rights? Yes, we have that one. Um, we build a brand new well.
I was gonna say wells and
And and and a new tank. We put in a new tank
Yeah.
and and a well and and we've added right in line with that, also with the water rights. Um, and the, uh, and the spring. Um, but yeah, I mean, with the with the new tank and and the well that we've drilled, that's a, that's a big focus right on that objective, so. Okay.
Right now, we have one, two, three, four, and then the small tank. Is that correct? We have four lar- if I.
Four water tanks?
Four water tanks and the small tank. There's one at Two Ed Eck Hill.
Two at Eck, there's a larger and smaller one there.
Yep, and the one up the canyon.
Canyon.
And then it went out on the north.
The new tank.
So we have four tanks. You know, that's, that is really an accomplishment for a community. For less than ten, what's that?
Five tanks, cause we have combs and reds up the canyon, so we have two at the can.
Four in the small tank, five, yes.
Five.
Yeah, but that's, that's really great. In the time that I've been here, we had uh, reds and the small tank. And since that time, three new large tanks have been added. And that's a tremendous accomplishment for our community. It really is.
How does that compare to other cities?
Well, Logan's deficient, cause that's why they're building a ten million gallon tank. And we're not. Just a comparison to them.
I think that's one thing that we can really hang our hat on in the front. We had great public works directors that paid a lot of attention to water. And the things that the state are going to make you do now because with the water into your general plan, we're fortunate that we've been doing that all along just because we had, we had people that really were passionate about it and it's a good system.
And and we're not panicked about new growth, having water. A lot of communities are. That's a panic for them.
Uh, well, you look at Hyde Park, they were behind and had to and and went dry and had to build a tank to 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 make up for that, right? We're not in that situation.
A lot of mandated water restrictions in Hyde Park till they got it, their their tank built.
So comparatively, you compare Logan, uh, that's behind and and that's why they're building their ten million and Hyde Park that was behind and they had to force, and we're proactively ahead and and putting that in.
Well, it's not an overnight project.
It's not an overnight project.
Our citizens still though are a little panicked about it. Like, I've had people this week talking about the the highland phases that are going in. Approached me like, do we have water for this? You know, I'm sure Scarlett remembers the wet water battle. Twenty years ago.
The paper water.
Yeah.
So I would like to report, we have zero paper water today. Every piece of our water right is associated to our, uh, to a source and and mostly any and all sources. So we can use any water right in which we have, even the one that was used to be in Richmond has been moved down to Broad Hollow to be able to use there and any of the wells. So we have no paper rights. We have all of our water, it is associated with a source and multiple sources.
And that's really a tribute and really a great thing because the state can take paper water and reallocate it, but they can't take water that's allocated to a source.
Yep, all. I I mean, that's a, that's a big, that's a big accomplishment. I'm pretty proud of.
It is.
And and we had zero opposition to it when we went through that process, but we have taken all of our water rights and they are all associated with a with a direct diversion source.
Which citizens just carry on the old
I know.
way of thinking. And I know we've educated in the newsletter and no one reads it. But I think continuing education.
Well, as long as they turn the tap on and it works, it's fine.
I know.
They still worry about it.
Yeah, sure.
Bring it up.
We updated our water fees, um, which I think was by state code that we had to do. I don't care, remember. We updated our water fees on a sliding scale, um.
It was mandated by the legislature.
We had already done that before the mandate came.
Yeah, we did that, uh, but we talked about water conservation education when we, when we reassess those fees. That may be those, um, that's something we can include our water in our newsletter. Some more conservation education.
It's good to have conservation. We do have water that we have. Is there times in which we have, um, stress? Uh, when there is a lot of use? Yeah, we've had a, we've had a record, uh, stress, uh, or a record, um, water use days, um, this year. And uh, if we could, if we could dictate when people use their sprinkler system uh, and they didn't all use it at the same time, um, certainly our water would 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 handle that better.
The power company didn't shut off the power all summer repeatedly. That might help too.
That might help too. That might help too. So, um, anyway, there are some of that that we're working on, but.
Do we have backup generators for those well pumps so that we don't end up with this like cycling?
Yeah, it's interesting you bring that up. We have some generators, but but we'll we'll add a generator here this year to to for this building, um, and we are looking at, uh, pricing and design, uh, for for backup generators at at our well sites. Um, we don't have that directly set up at this point, no. Um, but we are working on that plan a- as as we move forward. Um, so we're working towards it, but currently we don't.
Okay.
Uh, it would be a diesel generator, uh, is what we would expect. Now, if we could get a natural gas generator, that would offset maybe a different resource because it it anyway. Um, and uh, so we're looking at natural gas and diesel. We put a diesel one um, at the, uh, at the sewer lift station. That that generator's diesel. Um, but, uh, but the one here is is planned to be natural gas. The one that fibers natural gas. Um, so we're trying to to have multiple options.
The problem with natural gas for your generator is that if we have an earthquake and the lines are severed, it doesn't work.
Water line might be severed too and that would be another problem, so.
So it wouldn't work anyway.
But having natural gas versus versus electrical lines, uh, are two different direct utilities. Um, cause if we had an earthquake, we also probably would have a limitation on the amount of diesel fuel that we could get over the mountain. So, there there's lots of different pieces. That's why we're trying to spread out having different, different ones in different ways, so.
It's kind of been a common understanding as long as I've lived in the city and worked with the irrigation company and worked with the city is the fact that if for some reason there was a power failure and there was not a severed water line, that the flow from Broad Hollow could be utilized so that the city was never what you would call without water. Now, it could be severed with an earthquake and that'd change the whole dynamics, but uh, the irrigation company understands. We've worked back and forth when wells have gone down to uh, give the city water to make sure that, uh, the city had a supply. It wasn't necessarily a supply that could be, take care of everything, but it was a reduced supply. And that that is a real plus.
Yeah, and our agreement covers a lot of that, so that's great. Uh, uh, great that it was working and now we've incorporated that into agreement, uh, directly and in practice, so we're actively doing that, so.
So even if we couldn't pump it, it's gravity fed and people could come to a central location to get it. So it's not like we wouldn't have. So even if we couldn't pump it, it's gravity fed and people could come to a central location to get it. So it's not like we wouldn't have it.
And, and oftentimes when power goes out, sprinkler line, sprinkler power goes out as well. So, at that point, it, it's, it's helpful that the sprinklers aren't running during the power outage. So, yeah. Okay. Provide public services of water, sewer and parks and recreation facilities. With consideration of life cycle costs, including upfront costs and ongoing maintenance. Think we're achieving? Yeah. Um, any comments on that one? Any way we are, any plus or minus?
What is meant by life cycle costs?
Um, well, let's take for instance, um, skate park or, or a new facility. Um, we take into, into account not just the, the initial purchase cost of that. But we anticipated what an annual cost through the next, uh, thirty year life of the skate park would be. And we said, hey, how can we make sure that we keep the maintenance of the park as minimal as possible? So that it's not a cheap, um, initial cost, but over the life cycle of that asset. Whether it's a playground, skate park, uh, whatever, um, we work to make sure that that life, that, that cost over, over its life cycle. Um, is also considered. So we don't, we don't get a cheap upfront cost and, and, and forget about the ongoing maintenance. We'll pay a little bit more today to lower the maintenance in the future. That's what he's talking about.
All right.
So, good, great question. All right.
That one's just duplicated.
It is duplicated.
There's a few like that.
There is a few like that. Thank you. Um, manage financial resources wisely and maintain adequate fund reserves. Think we're accomplishing that? Any opposition or?
I like the five year budget model. I think it really helps with that.
A five year?
Yeah.
And we're accomplishing that in spades, actually.
The, I don't know whether you've seen it, and I haven't showed it a lot. We did, we did, uh, look over it. Um, last year when we adopted rates. Um, but what I use at this point is a, is a program called Waterworth. And I can predict not only the five year model, but a twenty-five to thirty year model with that software. And it, it helps me to, to identify those. So with our partnership and, and use of Waterworth. Um, it projects that out and we can watch that, uh, financial resource. And know that we have adequate reserves or rates based over that period of time. Um, and a longer horizon helps us with that. So, that, that's another piece. I'm not sure it's, it's openly seen as often as I'm using it. But wanted to let you know that, that, that's part of that piece of the puzzle. So, when it comes up in our, in our rates. Um, uh, watch for Waterworth, because it's a, it's one of those programs we use to help with that. Um, okay, multimodal, uh, uh, city. Um, promote development patterns that provide connectivity. We're doing that? Not doing that?
I think we're working on it. I, I think there are still some areas that we don't have connectivity. And I'm, I just am death on not connecting streets. Because it's terrible to have to have people get in their car and drive. A half a mile or a mile to get to a place that's like in their backyard. Yeah, so.
Yep, that one's a, the worst planned one. If, if development happened, we have a, we have a plan to, to connect those, but, um. Three twenty-five west. You saw that last? And that's a, that's a prime example of what, what's in here, uh, to do that. First south connection, when we connected first south all the way through and opened it up. When this plan was adopted, that hadn't happened. Um, four hundred to four hundred and seventy east, that, that connection, uh, when they came in and wanted, uh, back to back. Um, uh, cul-de-sacs, that this plan is saying that, that we don't do that. Fifth east, seventh south, fifth south. We have several of those that, that we're preserving and working towards. Continuation of a, of a pattern of connectivity throughout those. And that is, that's why those streets were in here in order to achieve this objective. So we, we'd achieve a multimodal city and we had connection by both bike, city, uh, bike, um, car. And walking. And that's why we have multiple connections, so that we can have a, a overall connected community. So, okay. Um, improve pedestrian safety, walkability and accessibility on province city streets, ride of ways and easements. Achieving?
We have sidewalk plans.
We have sidewalk plans, yeah, even though sometimes those. Even so, some of those are, are tough, yeah, so.
And sidewalk matching funds.
Sidewalk matching funds. Um, we've added new crosswalks. We've added new, uh, new, uh, pedestrian activated light. We're looking to add another one, uh, and maybe some more. Um, so, at that point, we're working towards some of that safety. Related issues as well. Um, have we completed? No. Is there more to go? Absolutely. Um, but we're making progress. And, and the goal is to, is the, the objective isn't to improve it, and so I think we're working there. Uh, create. Oh, yes. Oh, thank you. Sorry about that. Yep.
Hard to talk and drive at the same time.
Thank you. Thanks for calling that out. I appreciate that. Um, we're making good progress, right? So, we're down to, uh, create a network of bicycle and pedestrian sidewalks. Did we talk about that one? Okay. Provide city transportation system. Uh, the province city transportation system shall have a workable plan. Coordinating with the county and regional road systems. Who thinks we're accomplishing that?
We're coordinating, but they're not coordinating back.
Sometimes they don't coordinate back, but we're certainly coordinating. We have our plans include, our master plan, transportation master plan, and, and other plans have been incorporated in the CNPO. The COG, uh, and UDOT's plans that we've been able to incorporate into all of their general plans as well as ours. So, we have, because we've had a plan, it has been able to be incorporated into others. As those plans have been opened, our plan has been able to get there. And I don't know whether any of you have been in those, um, but various meetings. To, in order to coordinate and to, to help our plans into their plans.
I feel like we also tried to educate, um, what used to be Cash Valley Transit District, but connect.
Connect, yes.
Uh, on where our major traffic corridors are, so that they could, you know, make informed policies within their group, so.
And our plan is with the, the CNPO as well.
All right. Um, plan and construct transportation improvements within province city and interconnections to surrounding regions. Are we achieving?
Well, we tried to get connectivity.
Tried to.
By Walmart.
Yes, we did. We did. We worked on it, but they didn't.
Happen.
They didn't do. They built the hotel right, right on top of the road.
Top of the road.
But, uh.
We've tried to connect River Heights and we've tried to connect to Millville, but they don't really want us to.
The citizens don't have a plan like we have.
We certainly are working on our side. Sometimes it's hard for them on their side, but we're certainly working on our side. Um, identify existing and future right of way corridors within the city and interconnections with neighboring community and agencies. The one was planned and constructed, and the other one is identify existing and future. Are we accomplishing? I think the transportation master plan and the CNPO plans are prime examples of where we're, where we're identifying and, uh, and, and working on those.
And communicating those out, so that other people know what we've got and what we're working toward.
And even to our residents where, where we have those identified out. Some of, we've had some come from each one of these ones that we've, we've developed or we identified before. Where they're saying, hey, you know, I'd rather cul-de-sac, but we're saying, hey, you know, this connectivity, there's a reason. We're connecting it to be connected for safety. We're connecting it to be a walk, a, a connected community. There's reasons why, uh, we're doing that, and it's part of the overall plan and, and what it accomplishes.
So is that River Heights Road just up to River Heights now then?
Six south.
North of.
The vineyard, yes.
That's just up to them now. That's the road.
It is, yeah. Uh, they have submitted it as an application to COG. And we did, uh, issue a support letter for their application. So we want to help them, but we're not financially committed, but we want them to, to be able to move forward with a project like that.
They just kind of lost sight of the fact that it would be useful to their citizens as well. And so, they kind of slammed the door in everybody's face. And now they're saying, hmm, it might have been a good idea.
Their, their new mayor is working on that and, and.
Yes, he's doing a great job.
Blake is a good mayor up there and he's working on, on trying to connect those. I think they've agreed to have the sidewalk put in, at least to connect. Um, the vineyard over to the school at least. So I think that's going in with the project.
And I see they've made an ADA cut now on that corner there. I think it's six south and, uh, our field road. They have cut that out and made an ADA connection right there.
Good.
Yeah, they removed that section, brought in ADA.
Good. All right. Economic development. Uh, use zoning and design standards to promote a compatible transition. And or integration between residential areas and commercial, uh, development. Are we achieving, not achieving? How do you feel?
I think the planning commission has done a good job of, of holding true to that. Making sure that, um, zoning and transition areas are, are preserved.
I think that's true. I think we have transition areas. We also have, um, fencing and, and other, um, landscaping. Uh, transitions between a commercial into residential. So there's some, some, uh, items they have to, have to achieve there in that, in that transition.
So it's now time for truth and confession. I felt a little guilty after our last meeting on the zoning change that we recommended. Because it was, uh, you know, a different zone. But I, I personally felt like that. In the timeframe, there had been, and the way they proposed it and the restrictions they put on their property. I felt like they complied, and that's why I made the motion to approve it. Now, I hate to go against the zoning commission. But they recommend that we didn't approve it with, but I don't know if they really had a knowledge of the restrictions that were placed on it. But I felt with the restrictions that were placed on it, it was a good, uh, transition area. For what people could utilize. And so I guess I felt a little guilty about it. But on the other hand, as I've waited out, I felt like it was a fit.
Well, I think that was new information that came to us that did not come to the planning commission, so.
And that, and that can happen. Um, so, all right. Uh, maintain a sewer collection system that is efficient, economical, sanitary. Meeting local, state and federal requirements. Who thinks we're accomplishing this? Who has had their sewer back up this year? If you haven't, then we're accomplishing it. So, if you haven't, put your thumb up for that one. We're certainly accomplishing it, as long as you haven't seen sewer come up the sewer.
Well, we're making bigger pipe.
They maintained it.
The sewer.
I know, I know, but I'm just going back to water. My water went out, but they maintained it. They got it back pretty quick.
Good, yeah.
I forgot to mention that one on the.
That's good. Yes.
Oh, thank you.
And we have a great staff that maintains and takes care of that. But the sewer one, and, and one of the things we're doing with this. Um, we received a six hundred thousand dollar grant, uh, to help, uh, put in part of the lift station and part of the, uh, twelfth south. Um, and we'll put in twelfth south, which will allow us to, to continue our, the development and, and growth of our city. So, um, that's a big, that's a big plus on that one. So, okay. All right. Making it. We have just a few more here. Uh, identify the need of municipal services in developed and undeveloped. And, uh, in, unincorporated areas. I think a duplicate. Can we skip that one? Uh, provide a map of the expansion area. Who thinks we provided a map? Yep, we got a map. Yep. Um. Oh, yes. Thank you. Thanks. Perfect. Appreciate you. Um, okay. And the rest of them are on that same sheet, so. Uh, uh, map, okay. Identify the municipality's plans for extension of municipal services. Who thinks we've achieved that or achieving it? Yep, that's our master plans at work. Identify how the services will be financed. Who thinks we're accomplishing that? Yeah. Uh, our five to ten year budget, uh, and our Waterworth, uh, plan. Uh, along with the master plans and, and along with our impact fees. Uh, we've not only identified, but we're working to finance them, so. Provide an estimate of the tax consequence to residents, both current, currently within the municipal boundaries. And the expansion area. Who thinks we're accomplishing that?
We are, but the state's coming, duping us.
State's duping us? Yeah, that's very true. That's very true. Um, we have had.
Kick the chair out from under us.
Yeah.
We, we have, we have been, um, uh, we, we review our rates every year. We update those. Um, we, uh, we haven't had a property tax increase in the last five years. Um, and, uh, and really that's kind of the, the comparison when somebody annexes in, is what our tax is versus somebody else's. Um, and, uh, and when we've been contacted, I certainly have, have been upfront and letting them know. And I'm sure Scarlett has as well, and letting them know what it costs, right? Yep. So, we do that. Whether you see it or not, we're doing it for you. Um, identify areas that the city does not want to consider for annexation. Have we ever identified an area that we didn't want to annex?
Yes.
Deep slopes, okay. And, uh, and the south of Highland, right? We said, no, that's, that's outside of where we want to provide services yet, outside of where we're, where we're looking right now. Um, so that's a, that's an example. What's that?
And they wouldn't let us connect there either.
Yeah, wouldn't let us connect.
So it was mutual agreement.
There you go.
Go with that.
Yeah, worked out for everybody. Maybe. We'll find out. Identify the interest of all affected entities. Who thinks we're accomplishing that?
Sure try.
Can I say, for me, if, if and when we ever get to a, a reword. That's an extremely hard one to actually pinpoint what, what is that, that means and, and how to accomplish that. Anytime you have all entities and, and that, it's a really hard, uh, uh, objective to accomplish.
Well, you don't, you only control your piece of it. It's like saying you can control somebody else's actions.
Yeah.
Well, we get, we get people to the table, so at least everyone understands.
Yeah, yeah. And identifying all, um, certainly we're working to identify. The affected entities of, of, of things we're doing and, and when we identify them, we're trying to work with them, so.
Don't you have a spreadsheet of all the affected entities?
I'm sure he does.
Whatever that means.
Yeah. All right. Um, various housing opportunities. Last two, support and utilize. Existing affordable housing resources. Are we supporting and utilizing those? Who thinks we are?
Think we are, yeah.
Think we are.
Some we aren't.
I don't even know what all the resources are. I don't know how we can say that word. Uh, yeah.
Well, I think that has to do with, uh, uh, you guys and as you work with subdivisions and housing and stuff like that. And, uh, you, you promote, you know what the state is asking. You, you're bringing to the table. All the aspects of building and, and, yeah, maybe some areas a little higher density. But yeah, I think we're bringing all those aspects to the table when you guys work with, in the land use. At least that's my estimate.
Yeah. I think some of that's accomplished. Some of it, do we have, we haven't implemented some things like flip the strips. We haven't done, um, some of the things like, uh, the first time home buyer, because it had really some pretty strict requirements. Um, but we are utilizing, we are supporting utilizing those that we, we, that are existing, um, that, that we have. We're trying to help educate and, and support those, so.
I know we have done some code updates that have made it so that people could apply for those types of things.
Some things, yeah.
We just haven't got the development community on board. We would have probably done more, but the development community does not look at Providence. For those type of.
Right.
Opportunities.
Right. So, while we would support it. Right, so while we would support it, there's not the demand coming to us to, to do something different than we're doing, so.
Well, the property in Providence commands higher. Uh, payments, rates, housing, it, there aren't a lot of areas that we could build. What you would call starter homes in. It's just not within Providence anymore.
Alright, last one. Support fair housing practices through education and awareness. Who thinks we're accomplishing or working on it?
Big time.
Okay. And any comment on it? Alright, and I think we're doing some of that through educating with BRAG and similar services and we advertise through our newsletter and. Um, a lot of those different things, so. I appreciate, uh, I appreciate the exercise, um, as expected, about an hour and a half. I was, was close to my expectation, um, but I think it's a good exercise to go through and to, to remember and look. To say, here is what we're working on. Here's how we're trying to work on these objectives. And, and why we're doing some of the, um, some of the tasks we're doing. Um, we've gone over some of this in our staff meetings and, and some of the other meetings, uh, inside the city. And trying to help to identify where we're at. Um, certainly the, the staff is, is a support, uh, and trying to accomplish the general plan that you adopted. Um, and, uh, and just kind of, you know, with the, with the smaller agenda, I wanted to make sure that we took an opportunity to kind of go through. Um, in, in some depth of, of what these objectives that we've been asked to do. Now, if you'll continue reading the plan and going from there, there is some additional details. And it dives even farther into detail into some of these, uh, objectives. And, uh, if you haven't read them in the last little bit, um, I'd recommend going back and refreshing. Some of them, uh, felt overwhelming to me. Um, and, uh, and some we, we haven't started on, but we need to work on. Um, and, uh, and so there's a lot in there. Um, but the plan is designed to be a active document and, and, and actively worked on. Uh, not actively changed, but actively worked on, um, towards, um. Towards these, these items. And, uh, so anyway, that's, that's kind of where it's at. Um, a few items next year, um, we'll probably hit our ten thousand, uh, population base. And, and go up in classification of city. Uh, when that happens, we'll have to add, um, some additional sections to our, to our general plan. Um, as much as the state, uh, metals in modern income housing. Uh, there will probably be some updates and modification to that. Um, so anyway. Um. There will be some opportunities to, to maybe do some small, uh, incremental updates as we, as we go. Um, but I wanted to make sure that you were, kind of had this kind of exercise, so, um.
Well, and then we have to be prepared to give feedback to those entities that are making those decisions on our behalf. Too.
Alright, I pass this one back to you unless there's any other questions anywhere.
Can I make one comment?
Yes.
I'd like to give a shout out to Ryan and the staff for keeping the plan, a living plan before us. That in the last five years, it has been a living plan. It's, uh, been considered, it's been taken into account, it's living document for our community. Uh, and certainly we as a council wouldn't have the involvement to do that. Where you, Ryan, and the staff that you lead have, uh, done that. And we appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Scarlett, Scarlett does an amazing job in the planning commission side. Every one of her reports ties back to the general plan and the master plans. Uh, she does an amazing job to support that as well.
I forgot to include the planning and zoning and I want to thank them too, yes.
I appreciate the, Bob being here tonight to, to, um, listen to this review of, of the plan. And how we're, how we're working toward fulfilling that and because their role, the planning commission's role. And this is key as well. So Scarlett, thanks for your leadership on that. Okay, so, um, let's close that item number five and we'll go to staff reports, Ryan.
This was gonna be a two-hour report, so.
It was going to be.
Yeah, I thought that was a pretty good report.
I thought that was, I thought the hour and a half was a, was pretty good level of, of what we're accomplishing.
Okay, you're done.
I'd give that as my staff report and I, I don't know whether there's any ads that you want to add. I think we've covered election. We're covering some recreation. We have some recreation. It's, it's kind of slowing down, but we've, we've got a lot, so.
Plug in for, keep the date, the second Saturday in October for, um, the car show.
Okay, always a great event.
Santa Claus actually reached out to me and made sure to let me know that he would be through our tree riding. On, I think it's December fourth, the first Thursday after Thanksgiving, so those events are coming, but the car show is getting. Keep that in mind. Good thing, really do need to think about what they're doing with modern income housing. The legislative policy committee touches on it, but there's a subcommittee that we've been, that I am part of and. There's just making some changes that are going to make it really difficult for, they think they're making it easier, but they're going to make it more difficult. I think unless you have a, unless you have a transit center in your community. So that you can do stationary plans and things like that, that's where the, that's where they want to focus. They want reasons to be able to focus all of their money on those type of centers. So I think it's something that we need to be really.
Careful with.
Careful with to make sure that two things. When they make this big change, that we get credit for everything that we've done, that they don't do to us like they did last time and. They don't start over, even though you've been doing it forever. So we want to make sure that they don't make us lose what we got. And we also want to be able to be a player at the table and not, not because it's not. We aren't in a place that we can have a stationary plan if we wanted one. We just don't have that kind of population or anything like that. So we just want to make sure that smaller communities are not ignored.
Or forced into the template of larger communities.
Well, we just don't fit, so.
No, but they try to make us fit.
Yes, they do.
Did you hear that though? Santa, we, oftentimes we reach out to Santa or, or that. Santa reaches out to Scarlett. I just, I just want to make sure that we've placed her in the right.
Well, Providence must have been really good this year.
Providence was really good this year.
No coal for us.
We, we were really good this year and, and we have that, so we're happy to have her on our team, so. Anyway.
We let your grandchildren know that Santa is reaching out to you.
So that will be the conclusion of our staff report before eight o'clock.
Okay, okay. Uh, no executive session, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, so move. Second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Job. Thank you, everyone.